Studying going, how's everything been working?
It, yeah, it's going good. I think um this is not my first attempt, but I'm definitely realizing things. As we're going, I'm like, oh, no wonder I have to do this again. Like, this is clicking a lot better now. So. I would say good, very busy though, for sure. I've been doing your eight hours Saturday, four hours Sunday.
Awesome.
And then I do four hours on Friday too. And yeah, it's definitely a lot, but um it's going well. I'm learning a lot, which is good.
When uh when's your exam date?
Um, April twenty second.
April, perfect. So that pretty much lines up with the end of current semester with what? Uh, three weeks or so with some extra uh study?
Yeah.
Great. And this is, this is gonna be your second attempt?
No, this is my third.
Okay, um, I always like to say, you know, there's, there's passing on the first try. It feels great, you know, but. You don't get any kind of special award. You don't get any kind of special accolade, you know?
Yeah.
I'd say, you know, most end up passing on the first, if not the first try, the second try, but. You know, I've talked to people that they've taken twelve times.
Oh geez, I try not to do that.
No, we definitely wanna get it, get it, get you pass it this time. That way we can go back to your life, go back to everyday life, not just cramming nonstop. For example, yeah. No, great job um keeping up with that schedule. It's totally meant to be demanding. It's kind of like an all, you know, an all or nothing sprint because otherwise. You know, if you, if you kind of lighten up, you never know that extra hour of study time could be the difference between that one point. Of passing or failing. So yeah, great job. Definitely keep it up.
Will do, definitely.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Did you have a chance to print the uh the PDFs I sent you?
Yep, right here.
Awesome. I just loaded them up. Um, yeah, that always helps that we are not trying to, you know. Copy down diagrams and stuff and we can just generally go over the same stuff together.
Yep.
Great. Um, did you want to do the three-phase auto transformer first, or did you want to save that for the end uh if we have time?
Um, I'd rather do it first because I get these wrong a lot. So I think I've got to do it first.
Um, and I know specifically you mentioned the three-phase auto transformer.
Hmm.
Um, do you wanna talk? So what I did is I loaded a just a single-phase circuit. And then I loaded three of the single-phase auto transformer circuits. Um, do you wanna talk about how we connect these to make a three-phase transformer or the? Kind of the voltages and the currents supplied and supplied or all the above?
Uh, I think all the above would honestly be really helpful.
Okay, um, how familiar are you with just the single-phase circuit right here? Just one individual auto transformer?
I would say pretty good, especially you had a little trick in your on-demand course about how if. The voltage is lower on one side and higher on the other side, then you reverse the current. So that helped me figure out which way I common goes, cuz I think that was a really big. Trick for me to not figure out. Um, so after that, I think I feel pretty. Good with the single phase usually. I get confused when they ask for apparent power. Of the transformer. I never know if they're talking about like of the winding or of. The um, like system. I always get confused about that. So I think that's what I get tripped up on the most.
Sure. So typically, most of the time if they're talking about the apparent power, they're talking about the, the rating, the auto transformer rating. Or the maximum amount of power it can supply. And if that happens, you treat it just like a normal single-phase transformer. You can either calculate it on the primary side or the secondary. And the reference handbook, that's what they call SIO for input power. But you could do the primary low voltage times the primary current on the low voltage side. Or you could do the secondary high voltage times the secondary current on the high voltage side. And you can do it primary or secondary. It'll always be the same.
Okay.
And that's no different if I just quickly sketch like a standard single-phase transformer. That's no different than multiplying either. V one with I one or multiplying V two. With I two. That's the same thing, right? This would be your primary side. That would be your secondary side or vice versa.
Okay, but that, that's. I, okay, I get confused cuz. I think, well, I know there's like a third-party practice exam that really trips me up. Um, but I thought that they gave us. The, I have it right here. I'm not gonna bring up the question, but I was gonna. Say what parent power they gave us.
Sure.
They gave us, um. Okay, they gave us the, the apparent power of. The transmission line and then asked us for the winding. And I think I get confused about that.
The apparent power of the transmission line, is that how much? Power the auto transformer is drawing from the transmission line?
Uh. It's a, oh, sorry, it says the tran- I'm sorry, it says the auto transformer bank is capable of transferring. An apparent power and then ask for the MVA rating of the common winding.
Perfect. Yeah. So in that case, they're giving you the power rating. Which you can, reference handbook calls that SIO for input-output power. But that's either just your input apparent power. Or your output apparent power. Again, you can multiply the secondary and apparent power on, on single phase. It's always just voltage times current. So you can calculate the apparent power. Uh, that the transformer can deliver. Again, you can use, multiply the secondary voltage and current or the primary voltage and current. Likewise, if we look at the auto transformer, you can multiply the secondary voltage and current. Or the primary voltage and current. And really what that is, that's just the, you can call it the transformer rating. The maximum power it can deliver, the nameplate value, the nameplate rating. And then if they're asking you for the winding power. Instead of, instead of input-output power. Reference handbook calls that SW for S winding. And just like we can calculate the input-output power using either the input values or the output values. We can calculate the winding power. By calculating the power in the common winding. I usually just call that SC for short, apparent power in the common winding. Or we can calculate the apparent power in the series winding. And those two values will also always be the same. So if you're calculating the winding power. It's almost like I draw a box around the common winding. If I wanna calculate the apparent power drawn by this winding, I look for the voltage directly across from it.
Hmm.
Would be in this case voltage. And I look at the current flowing through it. Which would be the common current.
Okay.
So we've got VL times IC. We can also calculate, again, we can look at the series winding. And again, I'm, I'm drawing an imaginary box with my mind and it helps that, you know, we can just put up a temporary box. And now I'm looking at what's the voltage across just the series winding? We don't quite know it right off the bat, but we can figure it out pretty quickly. We know the total voltage from VH all the way down here.
Right.
High voltage. And then we know the voltage from here to here, the low voltage. So if I subtract, I subtract the high voltage. From the low voltage. Everything left over would be the voltage directly across the series winding.
Gotcha. That makes sense. KVL.
Yeah, KVL, and you can even trace it. Like if I follow VH. VH is really from here. To here. And VL is from here to here. So your voltage across your series winding is just from here straight to this common point. Call it V series, right? From just across that series winding. And it's just a difference. It's the difference between your total high voltage. Minus the voltage across your common winding, which is your low voltage. You subtract those two, everything left over is the voltage directly across your series winding.
Okay, I think that makes a lot more sense. I, I definitely got tripped up on. Transformer rating versus. Winding rating, but I think that's walking through it. I think that makes a lot more sense to me.
Good. Yeah, auto transformers at first, they seem, they seem way more confusing than they really are. And look, if we were to write out the formula for winding power using these series power variables. The voltage across, right? The series winding, we would just subtract. The high voltage from here to here minus the low voltage. And then now we wanna multiply. So I draw my box around my series winding. We calculated the voltage across. Can you see what current is flowing through it?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, and this number will always be identical to this number. It's always gonna be way less than your power rating. But the winding power in each winding for an auto transformer, they're always identical. I would, I would definitely check out, re-watch the recording of class three transformers. Um, the very first page, we go through all of those relationships. I would at least. Uh, watch it on double speed and it's a great refresher. It goes through all the KVL, KCL, it goes through the winding power relationships. And the input-out, input-output relationships goes through a lot of, a lot of good stuff.
Okay.
All right, ready to talk about the three-phase connection?
Um, I think. I can skip that cuz I know we don't have a lot of time and this was what I was most confused about anyways, and I wanna get to the other questions. So I think I'd rather spend our time. On the other questions, if that's okay.
Sure, you bet.
Cool.
We can always come back to.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Um, so yeah, what I did is I just all those questions from the technical study guide, I just pulled them out of the book. And I put them in order with the solution. So. We can go through these in the order that they appear, or if there's. Some questions that are more important than others, we can totally jump around to. It's completely up to you.
Um, I'm okay with going through them in order. The. Motors is all, has always been my hardest topic to understand. Um, but it is freshest on my mind this week, so. Um, I'm okay going in order.
Sure. All right, so this problem, right? We've got a three-phase Y-connected. Uh, three-phase Y-connected capacitor bank connected to this customer bus, right? So I would even, I would even just show. Three-phase. Y capacitor. Select the answer that best describes the change in voltage at the customer bus. So we're. Looking for this line voltage right here at the customer bus. Due to the addition of the capacitor bank, if the capacitor bank is rated for. We've got a capacitive reactance of eighteen ohms per phase. So I'd even add that right here. We've got eighteen. Ohms per phase. It says the total Y-connected load at the customer bus before. We add the capacitor bank is twenty ohms at a lagging power factor of point nine two. So we can even draw. A second load. That's also three-phase Y. And it's twenty ohms. At zero point nine two lagging power factor. So this customer bus feeds a three-phase load. And we wanna know, when we put this capacitor bank on here. Does that affect the voltage at all? And it's going to capacitor banks, they always, it's why they're used for voltage support when they supply that reactive current. A lot of times it cancels out any inductive current. That normally comes through. And drops voltage across the, the line impedance. So inductive current. Capacitive current, they're a hundred and eighty degrees out of phase, right? One is. Plus ninety degrees, one is minus ninety degrees, one is, you know, plus J minus J. So when they cancel out, you end up lowering the overall current magnitude of this, which of course with Ohm's law. Will reduce the overall magnitude of our voltage drop. And then KVL, when we subtract the input voltage. With our voltage drop, we'll end up with a higher voltage. Um, so this one is, is a relationship question. Um, let me know if you're, how comfortable you are with the math. If you wanna skip right to how we figure out, is it increasing by, decreasing by, or if you wanna start from the beginning, we can work through the math too.
Um, I know from my work that it's gonna increase the voltage, so. Um, I think the math, walking through the math real quick would be good.
Sure, okay. So let's see, the first step. Yeah, we're calculating the line current. That's drawn by, here's the, here's that twenty ohm. This is a three-phase. Y-connected load before, this is everything before we add that capacitor bank. So all we're doing in this step first is we're calculating. The line current before the capacitor bank. That way we can probably calculate the voltage drop and then calculate the voltage right here. So, and skip me at any time. If you're familiar with the current step and you wanna skip, feel free to, to tell me to push on. But we know the load has a point nine two lagging power factor. So we can use that to calculate the impedance of the load, right? Just take the inverse cosine. Of the load's power factor. So that's just gonna give us, like. We know it's twenty ohms at point nine two lagging power factor. So here, we're just combining the impedance magnitude. With the impedance angle. And then using our calculator to convert from polar to rectangular. In other words, twenty ohms at twenty-three degrees is the same thing as eighteen point four plus J seven point eight one ohms in rectangular. So this load right here, this is a three-phase load and the impedance per phase. Is eighteen point four plus J seven eight one ohms. That's this load right here. We could have left it in polar, it would have been fine in the calculator, but typically it's more common to express impedance in rectangular.
Yep.
So we've got. We've got the complex load. Now all we're doing is we're calculating the current, we're just using Ohm's law here. Current equals voltage over impedance. And Ohm's law, some of that trips up a lot of people. Ohm's law, it's always a single-phase formula. So even though we have a three-phase system with a three-phase line voltage. We have to divide the line voltage by the square root of three. To use the line to neutral voltage, always with Ohm's law. And that goes back to uh circuit analysis class. We're really using the single-phase equivalent circuit without drawing it out.
I, if I, I probably like. Wouldn't have, I just don't wanna make sure this would work. I probably wouldn't have added the angle yet. If I did this. Without the answer in front of me, I would have just added twenty ohms and then later added the negative thirty-two. Oh, that wouldn't have worked cuz it's twenty-three. So you do have to add it. To the load. Okay, wait, that's because there's reactants on the line too.
Yeah, so basically all we're doing is we're calculating. The voltage at this bus.
Hmm.
Before the capacitor.
Hmm.
And then we're doing the same thing. After we add the capacitor and the capacitor, if we add it to this bus, it's gonna be in parallel with the load.
Right.
We're looking at, we're calculating, okay, what's the voltage before? What's the voltage after when we add it? And then we can compare the changes to look at the answer choices. Is that an increase by twenty-five percent? Is that a decrease? Is that, you know, some other relationship?
Right, but I was thinking about how um in class. We were saying that the angle. The power factor angle comes from the load. So I know like, I, something I would have messed up is I would have just in twenty ohms. Found my current. Magnitude and then tried to add. The post sign negative one of point nine two negative.
The, the which part? You would have tried to add it to what?
What I probably would have done and messed up is I would have found that the angle was twenty-three degrees. And I probably would have tried to just somehow make it negative twenty-three. I would have found that because I know we've talked about how.
Sure.
The load angle is what causes. The power factor is what changes like theta. Negative theta I was the, the angle of the load. But I guess with this one, since there's. Reactants on the line.
Exactly.
That would have changed it. That wouldn't have worked.
Yeah, here, look, it'll help. So we've got. If we were to draw a single-phase equivalent circuit.
Hmm.
Here's this. Two plus J five ohm. This is the line impedance first. And then down here. Would be the. Eighteen point four plus J seven eight one. Here's just that twenty ohm load.
Yeah.
With the point nine two lagging power factor. Yeah, so the only difference why we can't use that right away is because. When we say the power angle equals the angle of the impedance. It's the angle of the total impedance.
Yeah.
This is when the problem gave us a point nine two lagging power factor, they're talking about just this load right here.
Okay, that makes sense.
In other words, so, so back to the single-phase equivalent circuit. Here's, on the three-phase diagram, I've got a line voltage of thirteen point eight KV right on the secondary side of this transformer, right? Essentially feeding the rest of my diagram. Here's our single-phase equivalent circuit, right? We would take that thirteen eight KV. We gotta divide it by what?
Square root.
Divided by the square root of three for your single-phase equivalent circuit. We call this phase voltage, call it line to neutral voltage, either or. And then now we're solving for the line current of our system. Using our single-phase equivalent circuit. And then here's Ohm's law, right? We've got a thirteen point eight KV divided by the square root of three. And we're summing up both of the impedances. Here's the two plus J five ohm line impedance right here. We're summing it up. With the load impedance. Right here. And it's easier to trace it even, we'll trace it on the single-phase equivalent circuit. So we've got two plus J five ohm, that's the line impedance. And then here's the impedance in each phase. Of that twenty ohm point nine two lagging power factor load. It's right here. And so now, look at this angle. This angle right here, what would, what would that angle be?
That's the angle from the reactant of the line plus the reactant of the load.
Yeah, that's, that's the angle of this line current on our single-line diagram, which is this. As this current in our single-phase equivalent circuit. When we used a reference angle of zero degrees.
Right.
Voltage. So now, since we, we had to combine both of those impedances in series, right? By adding them up. Now. Our power angle would be positive thirty-two degrees. Cuz this is like theta equals theta V minus theta I. Like we use zero degrees for our line to neutral voltage. And we got an angle of negative thirty-two degrees. Another, another thing that we can do, I think will help you here. You have your calculator handy?
Yeah.
Um, let's look at just the equivalent impedance. Let's add these up directly and we'll see what we get for the angle. It should be. The power angle positive thirty-two degrees. So I'm gonna do two plus J five. Plus eighteen point four plus J seven point eight one.
Yep.
Yeah, and there it is.
Thirty-two degrees.
And again, it's, it's uh, the impedance angle is always equal to. It's, you can kinda call it the total equivalent impedance. Cuz the load. The load itself is a point nine two lagging power factor and it's gonna cause this line current to lag a little bit. But we also have a two plus J five ohm line impedance, and that's also gonna change. The power factor a little bit, right? The system essentially sees everything downstream of the voltage as, as one whole load.
Hmm, yeah, that makes sense.
Sounds. All right, ready to continue?
Yeah, I'm good.
So we've got this line current here prior to adding the capacitor bank. And so now. You could do two things, right? You could calculate this voltage drop with this line current. And subtract it from this voltage to get our customer voltage. Or you can just multiply the line current. By the load to also get the customer bus voltage. And a really easy way to see that is. The customer bus voltage is gonna be the voltage across the load in our single-phase equivalent circuit, right? We're looking for this voltage drop. We're looking for this. Hmm. We'll, we'll call that the voltage available at the load instead of the voltage drop. How about that? So we're, we're looking for the voltage available at the load. Before and after the capacitor bank. So we could either use KVL, right? We could figure out, okay, what's this voltage drop? Across the line from this current, subtract it from my voltage supply. Everything left over gives me the voltage at the load. Or hey, look, I've got a box, right? Ohm's law. V from here to here equals uh I from here to here times the impedance Z from here to here. So that this two red plus minus voltage, the voltage at the, that's the customer bus, right? Right there. That's all that this math is doing.
Yep.
We're multiplying, here's the complex current we just found on the previous step using Ohm's law. We're, we're using Ohm's law again, right? We're using our complex current with the twenty ohm. At an angle of twenty-three, or we could have used eighteen point four plus J seven point eight one, same thing. So that gives us this voltage from line to neutral right at the customer bus. So now that we know that voltage before we add the capacitor bank. The only change we're gonna include, look, here's that, here's a. Three-phase capacitor bank and it's eighteen ohms per phase. It's up to us to include that negative J for capacitive reactance. And now we're gonna, we're gonna do the same thing to find the line current. But before we can do that, we gotta find out what's the new equivalent impedance. Cuz now we've got the original load that we figured out on the previous page in parallel with the capacitor bank. So if I were to take. The single-phase equivalent circuit from before. See where I can squeeze it in here. That same single-phase equivalent circuit. Here's the original load on the customer bus, excuse me. And now we've added, here, I'll draw it as a capacitor. We've added a capacitor in parallel. With our customer load. So if we wanna calculate our line current like we did before, we gotta figure out what's the new equivalent impedance of these two. And are you, are you familiar with calculating parallel impedance?
Yeah, yeah, I know product over sum or one over the plus one over the, one over the.
Perfect. So yeah, that's all we're doing here. And then the overall, like the Z customer equivalent impedance. That's the thirteen point five minus J. Ten point five ohms. That's the new customer. Equivalent impedance. And we do this, here's the same Ohm's law before, like using our single-phase equivalent circuit. The current in the single-phase equivalent circuit equals the voltage V. Divided by the total equivalent impedance. Here's our two plus J five ohm line impedance. And that's in series. With the new customer equivalent impedance. That's the. Previous load in parallel with our new. Capacitor bank. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, all we're doing, it's the same step as before. We're just recalculating what the line current will be. When we add this capacitor bank right here in parallel with the existing load. And look at this. Notice how the, the line currents decreased, right? It was like six hundred something before. Oh no, it was three hundred, okay. Three hundred and thirty. Okay, so the magnitude has increased, but the angle is, is leading now instead of negative thirty two. It's leading. So we'll see what, you know, the hard thing with complex numbers. You can only compare the magnitudes and they have equal angles. Like a lot of times they will change in unexpected ways. Depending on which way that complex number is pointing. So now it's. We still had like a, a zero degree reference angle. So how about this? What's my, what's my power angle now? After we added the capacitor bank?
Negative twenty.
Negative twenty. A negative power angle. Is that leading or lagging?
Leading.
Leading, great. A lot, that confuses a lot of people. It's a positive current angle or a negative power angle. Is a leading power factor. So now we've gone from, we've gone from a lagging thirty two power angle. To a leading. Twenty degree power angle. Quite a big difference. And then down here, it's the same step as before. Look, we're calculating the voltage across this parallel. Equivalent load. We can show it from here to here. We could show it from here to here, could show it from here to here. That's all the voltage. Across the customer bus. In our single phase equivalent circuit. So using Ohm's law again, like if I know, we just calculated this new line current with the capacitor bank, right? Four hundred and eighty four point four amps at here's our leading twenty degrees. So now, if I'm imagining my customer. Load and the capacitor bank, I'm imagining this as one single equivalent thirteen point five minus J ten point five ohm load, right? We calculated them in parallel. So I can use Ohm's law to think, okay, if I want to know the voltage, I'm gonna draw a box. The voltage from here to here. Is going to equal the current from here to here times the impedance from here to here. It's the same thing we did, uh, last time, but last time we only used the customer load. We didn't use the new. Equivalent load with the two of them in parallel.
Yeah.
So here's the. Equivalent parallel impedance. Here's the new line current. That's drawn when we have, right, when we have the previous customer load and the capacitor bank in parallel. And now we've got a voltage at the load of about eight point three kilovolts. Let's see, before. Before it was six point six. So this is. Before the capacitor bank. And, uh, this is after. It's gone up by quite a bit. It's gone up by about two kilovolts, right? Do you see the increase?
Yeah, yeah.
So. We could potentially stop here, right? Maybe the question was, was a fill in the blank AIT question. Or maybe the question was a multiple choice that said, what is most nearly the volt, the line to neutral voltage available at the load? After the capacitor bank, boom, I'm looking for about eight point three KV. But the problem took it one step further, turned it into a relational question, which typically these give people a lot of trouble. Uh, you know, it didn't say, hey, you know, the voltage at the load after the capacitor bank is it this, is it this, is it this? It's saying. Hmm, has the voltage at the customer bus has it increased? And by how much, right? Has it increased by twenty five percent? Has it increased by fifteen percent? Or has it decreased? Um, or has it not changed? So are there, are there two answers that we can throw out right away? And if.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I would immediately throw A, B, and D without even solving.
Perfect.
So, but I know, I know you're probably saying A or C, cause or A, or A or B, because it got twenty five percent, but. I know it's, um, A.
So yeah, we know, we know it's gone up, right? We know it's gone from six point six KV to eight point three KV. So I immediately, I, I know D is obviously wrong. Clearly it's changed. Um, I know it has not decreased. So boom, A or C is gone, right? So now we're trying to figure out, okay, is this a twenty five percent increase or is this a fifteen percent increase?
Which is A.
And we just take the ratio. Yeah, we just compare. So after the capacitor bank, and that's what the question said, how is it changed after the capacitor bank? So we take the after amount, about eight point three KV. We divide it by the before amount, six point six. And there is a hundred and twenty five percent increase, which is the same thing as saying it has increased by. Twenty five percent. If only percentages were available, and it said, select the answer below. That describes change in voltage after the capacitor bank. If all there was was a hundred and twenty five percent, that would be it, right?
Right.
One times twenty five percent. But then you gotta look at the wording. It's increased. Increased by twenty five percent. It's twenty five percent on top of the original value. Cool. Any, any questions on this one or you want to march on?
I'm ready to march on.
Let's march on.
Thank you.
All right, fifty five. We got a Y connected. Uh, three phase fifty five MVA. Synchronous generator thirteen eight KV. We've got an internal reactance of one point four per unit. We want to know what's the internal state or phase voltage. So we're looking for what's EO right from this week's class on rotary machines. And we want to know, look, this, they can get sneaky here, look, in kilovolt. So I know, I know the units of all of these answers are KV. And then typically anytime you see full load rating conditions, a hundred percent load, that's always really important. Cause that's letting me know, man, if I have a fifty five MVA, if I have a fifty five MVA synchronous generator. And it's at full load, how much power is that three phase synchronous generator putting out? If it's rated for a maximum of fifty five, and the problem says, hey, at full load. What's the full load rating of that generator?
For, oh, for apparent power or?
All the above.
Parent power is fifty five MVA three phase.
Yep. If it says full load and it gives us our, your rated, your rated values are the maximum power it's rated to deliver. Just like if I have a seventy five KVA transformer, if that's at full load. Or rated conditions, hey, that transformer is putting out its nameplate seventy five KVA.
Got it.
So we've got, I'm gonna just copy down the ratings and move it down. So we've got three phase fifty five MVA. This thirteen eight KV, is that a line voltage or a phase voltage?
Um, line.
Great. How do you know?
Because it didn't say, and it's three phase.
Perfect. Absolutely. Which of the voltages is that? The rating of a generator or motor? We've got E and EO. Do we know which one it is?
E.
Yeah, right at the terminal. Perfect. And we got a reactance of. One point four per unit. Alright, so here's our, here's our single phase equivalent circuit, right? Straight from like what we covered this week. The prob, the problem asks for the internal phase voltage, right? That's. That's EO is what we're looking for. The reactance is one point four per unit. If I use this in the circuit, what do I gotta remember to include here?
J.
I'd include the J. You gotta be careful with the reference handbook. They don't show that. On the circuit. Uh, they took the circuit from Will D's book. Will D's book has a mistake. So this is. This is the reactance value, one point four. But when we're doing Ohm's law, KVL, KCL, we're not just using the reactance, we're using the, the impedance value, right? It's really a complex impedance of zero plus J one point four. Or a complex impedance of J one point four, right? This is the reactance value. But a synchronous generator, I know it's an inductive reactance, so it's up to me to throw that J in there in my calculations, in the math. Alright, so let's see. The generator was rated for thirteen eight KV. We said that was related to the terminal voltage. But we said that was the three phase terminal voltage. So if I want to use that thirteen eight KV in my circuit, what do I gotta do to it?
Add my square root three.
Perfect, because it's a single phase equivalent circuit. So we gotta go from line to phase. Alright, we're pretty good. Um, it said full load and point eight power factor. So how do I find? If I were to draw the generator like this on a, this is a three phase single line diagram, right? Here's their generator. And here's our three phase generator ratings. How do I calculate the line current at full load?
V I conjugate. Or no, it'd be square root three, V L I L.
Perfect, yeah, the three phase apparent power formula, right? So this formula, we're not really looking at the single phase equivalent circuit. These are all phase values. I'm just saying, hey, I've got a generator rated for fifty five MVA three phase. Thirteen eight KV three phase. That's the voltage right here at this bus. So I can use the three phase apparent power formula, right? I'll take that. Fifty five MVA three phase divided by square root of three times. The rated line voltage. And that's going to give me the line current of this generator. At full load. Cause we use the full load power rating. What happens when I set up my single phase equivalent circuit? What is this? What's the phase current in my single phase equivalent circuit equal to?
I O.
Yeah, the, these two currents, we can call it, down here, I just called it I, right? That's the same thing. This is our, this current right here is equal to this current. So here's that three phase apparent power formula, fifty five MVA. Divided by square root of three times thirteen eight KV. And look, we get a magnitude. Of two point three zero one kiloamps. That's this current and that's. Oops, not a text box. That's, uh, this current over here. Squeeze it in down here. How about that? So. We're eventually, we're trying to get, it's asking for this voltage, right? So in my mind, I know I got to use Kirchhoff's voltage law, right? I know EO is gonna equal EX plus E. I already got my E, right? It's just, I just divided by the line voltage divided by square root of three. So I really know, I gotta, I gotta work this voltage drop. So if I want to work this voltage drop, I know I'm using Ohm's law. Once I have E of X, I can add it to E, boom. There's the answer.
Right.
But these are all complex numbers, right? I'm gonna need my angle for my current. How do I get the angle of my current?
Power factor.
Power factor. So the problem said, full load at a point eight lagging power factor. Simple, right? We take our power factor, we take the inverse cosine of that, we get a power angle. I can use this angle for my current, right? But I gotta do something to it.
Oh, negative thirty seven.
So this is a negative thirty seven degree current angle. But if I do that, I'm using a reference angle. I've already assigned my reference angle by using that trick.
Right, it's zero.
It's zero, great. But we've got EO, E of X and E. Which voltage gets that? Zero.
E does.
Perfect, absolutely, yeah. The power factor with synchronous machines, it's always the angle between E and I. Has nothing to do with EX or EO. True for generators, true for motors. Always E, angle of E and angle of I. So we're almost done, right? I can almost use Kirchhoff's voltage law, right? I've got E. I've got my complex line current. I've got my complex terminal voltage now too. We're using the angle of zero. So really, I know I've got to use Ohm's law, V equals I times Z. To get my voltage drop, right? Then I can add them up, get EO. But there's one more trick in this problem. Do we know the reactance in ohms just yet?
No.
So we gotta, we gotta convert from per unit to ohms. So we gotta figure out what's X of S in ohms. And I can multiply it by my complex current. That'll give me my voltage drop. I can add my voltage drop to my terminal voltage. Finally done. There's the internal phase voltage. How do we convert from per unit to ohms?
Oh, multiply by the base.
Multiply by the base. Here's the per unit value they gave us. We gotta figure out our base impedance. How do I figure out my base impedance?
Go to the handbook.
Think about your, think about your power fundamentals. Um, look, I already know, I know. In terms of per unit, what is the power rating gonna be? That's our what?
Fifty five MVA, the system.
Is that base value?
Yeah.
Base value, great.
Okay.
What about the line voltage of the machine? Is that a base value?
Yes.
Sure. This one point four per unit, that's the per unit reactance of this generator. So this one point four per unit reactance, it's expressed. Using the generator's ratings as base values. So hmm, I know an S base, I know a V base, I'm trying to get to Z based. Can I think of any formulas that? Use SV and Z.
Oh, I'd be squared over R.
Perfect. So we'll say, we'll, we'll, we'll write it like this first. Apparent power equals V squared over Z, right? If I use my base apparent power with my base voltage, this is my. Base impedance. That's all it is. And we're just setting that whole thing equal to our base impedance.
Got it.
And notice we're, notice we're using line, uh, three phase values, right? This is the. So that's like Z equals V squared over S, right? Z equals V squared over S. Here's the three phase terminal voltage, what we called EL earlier, like the line version of the terminal voltage, right? Here's the three phase apparent power rating. Of the generator. Just because we're using a single phase equivalent circuit for KVL and voltage drop, all that stuff. Doesn't mean I can't use line values to figure out what's the base impedance that, that one point four per unit reactance was expressed in.
If, if I did the phase voltage over fifty five divided by three. Would I still get the same answer?
Hundred, hundred percent, because then you're doing. You're dividing. You're dividing the line voltage by the square root of three first before you square it.
Mm hmm.
And then you're dividing. The power base by three.
Got it. Okay, cool.
This turns this into a three and I got three divided by three. Look at the same, yeah.
Sweet.
Same base value. So now we're doing, like, we're just converting that one point four. From per unit back to ohms. Here's the base value, right? ZB. So that one point four per unit, it was really about four point eight ohms this whole time. In other words, if that one point four per unit is on the nameplate, they already divided the four point eight ohms. By the space value. So like, we're undoing what they did to get, hey, I need ohms to get my voltage drop in volts.
Got it.
Alright, so. Back to this. Messy circuit. So look, now I've got, I've got everything I need, don't I? So now we've got X of S. So now we've got X of S in Ohms instead of per unit. I've got my complex current, I've got my complex terminal voltage. I know every variable in this generator circuit except for the variable that we're solving for. So then down here here's our generator circuit. Here's EO, right? This is what we're solving for. Here's E, we already got that value. We've got our complex current, we've got our reactance in Ohms. So if I want to calculate EO, I'm using KVL, right? If I leave this way, EO is gonna equal E of X, the voltage across my reactance as the current flows through it plus my terminal voltage. So this right here in red, what value is this that I just circled? What's, what's the current times JX of S?
E of X.
Yeah, that's E of X. That's the voltage drop from here to here. So the voltage drop plus the terminal voltage, that's EO. Here's the line current magnitude. We got that using the three-phase apparent power formula, right? Right here and here. That's our magnitude. And we got the angle of the current from the power factor. So here's, here's theta. Here's theta times negative one to get our current angle. And then again, look, when we did that, that trick, we already assigned zero degrees for our terminal voltage. And that's, that's just our E value, right? That's the thirteen eight KV divided by square root of three. So this is just your line to neutral terminal voltage. And we're adding it to the voltage drop. And then here's, here's the per unit reactance converted to Ohms, right? We multiplied by the base impedance. And then again, big gosh, it's up to us to include that J. I, I can't multiply the reactance by the current to get my voltage drop. I gotta multiply the impedance by the current to get the voltage. And yeah, that comes out to seventeen point seventeen KV, angle of thirty-one. And we're just looking to solve for the magnitude. We had to carry all the, all the complex numbers, right? All the angles, all the plus minus Js. We had to include the complex numbers to get to this final answer. But once we're here, all we're really interested in is the magnitude, seventeen point seventeen. Any questions on this one?
No, I think this one's good.
Um, we got just enough time for one more. It's okay if we go a little over, but do you wanna, is there one in particular you wanna cover or you wanna just keep going, uh, in order?
Um, yeah, I'm looking through them right now. Let's just do I think since we just did motors, let's, let's just do number sixty, I think. Because I know we haven't gotten this much components left in this class, so
Sure.
I can come back to that one.
Alright, sixty says, we've got a four hundred and eighty volt balanced and positive sequence, three-phase power source. Is that line voltage or phase voltage?
Um, that is that's line voltage.
We got a three-phase power source, that's our three-phase line voltage. It's connected to an unbalanced three-phase load. What happens if a three-phase load is unbalanced? What does that mean?
Uh, I mean, it's not zero, one twenty, negative one twenty anymore. Right?
So, uh, not quite. So typically, typically the hundred and twenty degree phase shift is when we're looking at voltages.
Right.
How about when a load is balanced, whether it's delta connected or, or Y connected, what does that mean compared to all three of the individual phases?
When they're balanced, they all equal zero and you add it together.
Uh, so if I think, if I've got a, we'll just say one plus J two ohm balanced, Y connected.
Oh, they're all one plus J two, all three of them.
Bingo.
Okay.
So what happens if it's unbalanced? They're no longer all
The same.
They're no longer all identical, yeah. We've got an unbalanced three-phase load. And we know that that load is consuming seventy-five kVA of power at a lagging power factor of zero point nine seven in only phase A. Sixty-five kVA with a lagging point eight one power factor in phase B. Get my blue pen. And forty-five kVA of power with a leading power factor of point seven two in phase C. Just based off those numbers, can we tell it's an unbalanced three-phase load?
Yeah.
Sure. Different amounts of apparent power, different power factors too. They're not, they're, they're not identical. So really even saying it's an unbalanced load is redundant.
Yeah.
We want to calculate the impedance of a balanced Y-connected load, so all, a Y-load with equal impedances in each of the three phases that consumes the same amount of three-phase power compared to that unbalanced load. These values, sixty-five K, uh, seventy-five kVA with a power factor of nine seven in phase A, et cetera, et cetera. Are these values, three-phase values or single-phase values?
Single phase.
How do we know?
Because they said phase A in phase B and phase C.
Perfect. When I have whether my load is balanced or unbalanced, how do I determine the total three-phase power from the individual power?
You add them together.
Add them together. Yeah. Normally we use a shortcut of what? Normally we can say, hey, the, we even say the complex three-phase fa- power is three times the complex single-phase power. Usually we do this quite often. But this only applies to what kind of loads? Balanced or unbalanced?
Balanced.
Balanced. They're identical, so if I add three identical things, it's the same thing as multiplying by three. But just like you said, it's unbalanced, so in other words, we're just gonna add sixty-five kVA, we've gotta find the power angle. But forty-five kVA, we'll find the power angle and we'll add it to, uh, the last one, phase A, seventy-five kVA at point nine seven. So really, we're just gonna calculate the total three-phase power. And then we can figure out using, we know it's four hundred and eighty volts line voltage, we can figure out what, if it was balanced, if I had a three-phase Y-load that was balanced, what would the impedance be if it draws the same amount of three-phase power? So we're, we're a little short on time, but um I think we're good here, right? Look, we're converting phase A, B and C, we're just converting the power factor
Yep.
to the power angle. And then notice, look, phase C was a, was the only leading power factor. So what do we have to do to the power angle? Because it's leading.
Negative.
Yep, gotta hit it with that negative sign, because when I punch in inverse cosine of point seven two, what's my calculator gonna tell me? Calculator is just gonna say forty-four degrees.
Right.
Up to us to go up, it's leading, I gotta give it that negative sign. And so now, all we're doing, here's the power angles we just calculated for phase A, B and C. And they gave us the apparent power, which is what? The magnitude of complex power. So in other words, we just figured out, okay, the complex power drawn by each phase, A, B and C. And we're adding them together, just like you mentioned, to get the total three-phase complex power from, like, this is the individual single-phase power consumed by A, B and C, boom, add them up, there's our total three-phase power drawn by that unbalanced load. It's different amounts in each phase, but the power supply feeding that three-phase load is supplying a total of a hundred and fifty-nine point seven kVA. With a little, pretty close to unity, right? Nine-degree power angle. It's not too bad overall. Though the one leading really helps balance out the other two lagging power angles. Alright, so now we're, we're looking at a Y-connected load, right? If this is a balanced Y-load, tell me one more time, what's the relationship from A to neutral, B to neutral and C to neutral? These Z-values, they're all gonna be what?
They're all the same.
Yeah, they're all gonna be equal for balanced load. So I want to figure out, okay, what would this value, my impedance in all three phases, if it's Y-connected, have to be to consume this amount of three-phase power if it's a four hundred and eighty volt three-phase power supply? So I'm thinking, hmm, I know S. I know complex S even. I know V, trying to get to Z. Do I know any formulas that relate all three? And it's, it's one we just used on the previous page.
Yeah, V squared over V.
Yeah, V squared over Z. Um. On this book, I worked it out using line values. Typically, I recommend using the per-phase values of V squared over Z and I squared Z. Because depending on a Y or delta connection, sometimes there's a three multiplier. Um, if, if we use I squared Z for a Y connection, we'd have to multiply it by three. If we use V squared over Z for a delta, you gotta multiply it by three. Instead of trying to remember which connection and which of the two gets the three, if you do phase values, it always works out. You never have to worry about that. So typically, I would recommend doing it like this. I would say Z equals phase voltage squared over single-phase apparent power. So in that case, I would take my calculator. I would say, okay, four eighty is line, divided by square root of three, that's phase. I'm gonna square that. And then down here, just starting with the magnitude, I would divide my three-phase apparent power by three to get my single-phase apparent power. Let's say a hundred and fifty-nine point seven, E to the three, divided by three. So that gives me the same magnitude, right? The other thing I typically recommend is these formulas. Don't try to do the complex version of these formulas, because again, sometimes there's a conjugate, sometimes there's not. Instead of worrying about which one gets the conjugate, you just pull the power angle from where, like, we already know the power angle. I already know it's gonna be one point four Ohms at nine degrees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because it's balanced, so I could just use that, because the powering was different from, okay, yeah, it makes sense. I'm, I'm there now.
No, it's, it, this stuff gets real tricky. The, it's a balanced load, but the angle of these loads have to be nine degrees to get a nine-degree power angle.
Got it.
There's and unlike the first problem we worked, we're ignoring any line impedance, right? This is the only load on the circuit, so that is the total impedance. So my calculator, I've got one point four, I would even do this, I'd go up, pull it back down. I'm just building a complex number, I'm giving an, an angle of nine. And then now my calculator, I can convert it to rectangular. I use rounded values here, right? I'm sure on the solution, I was, I, uh, like I use point seven divided by three, in the solution, we're probably carrying all the values forward. So it's a little, a little rounded compared to what I have here, right? One point four two compared to one point three eight, but it's essentially the same. So we end up with, look, a complex impedance of one point three eight plus J zero point two three Ohms. From A to neutral, B to neutral and C to neutral. If it's connected to a three-phase four hundred and eighty volt power supply, it's gonna consume a total of a hundred and fifty-nine point seven kVA of power at a nine-degree power angle, which would be pretty close to unity if we took the cosine of that. And the cool thing is here, you could backtest this, you could use the single-phase equivalent circuit, right? You could figure out, okay, what's the current? If I connect it to forty volts line, and then from the current, you could multiply that by the voltage to get the power. Or you could do I squared Z, you'll get the same power. Or even here, we could use the same V squared over Z formula we used to solve for Z to prove it to. There's a lot of different ways you could work it backwards to get that same, hey, if this is the impedance of a balanced three-phase load and I power that balanced three-phase load with a four hundred and eighty volt power supply, it's gonna su- uh, consume the same amount of total three-phase power compared to those, the sum of those previous unbalanced loads.
Got it. That makes sense.
Um, so
Weird problem. The weird problem.
It really tests your circuit analysis. There's a good one on the, I want to say it's in the AIT practice exam that's similar.
Okay.
Yeah. If you look at the power factor, if you look in the back where it says the subjects, I want to say it's a power factor correction problem. It'd be a great one to work right after this one as extra practice. And you've got three unbalanced loads. And it asks, what's the, what's the biggest capa- three-phase capacitor bank you can use to correct the power? Without going past unity power factor in any of the three unbalanced phases.
Okay.
It's a, it'd be a good practice one, and it, it really kind of helps tie together um, the difference between balanced and unbalanced, but how they're still, just because it's unbalanced, doesn't mean I can't, you know, calculate the total amount of power that's gonna consume, right? It's different in each phase, but when I add them up, hey, that's the, that's the total three-phase power, that transformer is gonna supply it. But, uh, yeah, that power factor, when I, I would check it out. If, if you can't find it, shoot me an email and I'll, I'll dig it up, but, uh, it, it would kind of further reinforce what we did on this one.
Okay, cool. I'll definitely look at it.
Awesome. Do you have, um, any other, any other last minute questions, um, before we get going?
No, I don't think so. This is really great and very helpful, so I'm really appreciative.
Awesome. Glad to hear that. Um, the hardest thing for me is the hour always goes way faster than anyone expects. Um, especially, you know, when we're really kind of nitpicking at things, it, it takes time to really kind of dig into the problem. So I always try to you know, move on when it makes sense to move on or stop and pause. So for me, the challenge is always, how can I cover as much information in the hour? Uh, but yeah, I'm glad to hear that. Uh, keep putting in those eight-hour Saturdays, that'll definitely be, uh, a big help. I know you've been super active too on the online community. Uh, I always encourage everyone, keep your phone open when you study. You can literally just snap a picture with your phone and write your question, post it and keep studying. And, uh, it, it's the fastest way to kind of get these concepts, because there, there's so many nuances and kind of tricks to this that it, it takes a healthy amount of Q and A to, to learn it quickly. So keep, you're definitely on the right track.
Okay, awesome. That sounds good.
Alright, Valerie, hey, it was great meeting you and, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
The semester.
Yeah, thanks. Have a good weekend.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye.